Someone from the public to address all of the council members at once. We have your full attention, but it's not a discussion forum. So we will listen. It's a one-way conversation. We will hear you, but we don't respond. Okay? If afterwards, if you want to reach out to any of us individually, you can, or to anyone in the staff to pursue whatever you bring up.
Thank you, Council and Madam Mayor, I guess. Oh, I'm here because of the famous Azure Way Alley situation that's affecting Glen Way, Pine Crest, and Morningside. And we've been trying to figure out what to do because of the situation that we have to put the bulk grade in the front. And that's just gonna mess up all our yards in the front. They are bringing, picking up the garbage in the, in the front of the, the houses, the properties. But we have the issue of the bulk garbage, which is they were picking up in the back. I don't know if you're familiar with it. And the neighbor put the fence, he put a fence up all the way to the property line, so the truck can't turn. There is two poles where the, his fence is, where the angle is that the truck can't turn. There, there are, on the other side of the alley, there's two big poles that maybe if we change them or we move them, then the truck can, can turn that, that corner. I, it, the, all our Florida FPNO lines are behind, underground there. So it's probably AT&amp;T and Xfinity that are, that's, that have those lines. So we're hoping that the city can help the, the situation by, by talking to them and maybe moving the, and it's two big, big poles, not even the smaller ones. They're like bigger than that. And there's two of them. So I think if we reduce it to one and, and move it, we, because we had the same situation on the other side of the alley, like about four or five years ago. And FPNL moved the pole and the trucks could turn. And in this side, there's two of them. But, you know, hopefully, if we reduce it to one and move it, the truck can. The, the claw truck can fit, because I know they're made for the alleys. They're more narrow. But the truck that the garbage goes in is the one that can't turn the, the corner.
Thank you for your suggestions. And our city manager will have someone here, or have someone from Public Works follow up with you to.
So much. Do you give her your contact information?
So that they can look into your suggestions. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up for open forum. Is there anyone virtually?
No, no mayor.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the council minutes from the.
Mayor.
Oh, you're here. Oh, wonderful. Okay. Hi, welcome. Are the students coming up?
G U I.
Teacher planning day.
Oh, G U I?
Okay.
You mean no teacher, no teachers?
Right.
Tried and true. I want to thank you. Well, the show that you're doing is level one.
They're William R.I. or not?
They're all beginning students in my fabrics and fibers and my 2D design. And so what they were learning about is Mexican culture and heritage in the Oaxacan region for wuchao yarn painting. And so they learned how to do the technique, and then they applied it to current images and ideas. But there are only two students that are not level one down there. So that's all beginning artists. Time figuring out how to work with glue and yarn and not have it stick to your fingers. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share their work as well as the advanced students. It's a fabulous forum.
Well, we thank you for the opportunity to beautify City Hall and to give residents and anyone visiting City Hall the opportunity to see, you know, this diverse artwork. What region is that from? This, you, is that, yes, is that in the United States?
Mexico.
Oh, Mexico. Okay. Wonderful. This is just, it's beautiful work. And I know I'll look at it more in detail when we go downstairs, but.
Miami Springs Senior is very proud to be able to display any time you need. We're happy to step in and fill your doubt.
We're very, very appreciative of the talented artist at Miami Springs Senior High and their sharing their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so. Did you, do you want to speak in open forum? Okay, come on up. Keep it to two minutes, please. Okay?
My name, my name is Tom Lopez. I live in.
Let's, let me go ahead and have you sign right here too. So you're officially. Okay, and, and for, I'll just, while he's signing, remind everyone, if you want to speak to, at open forum, you just have to be here right before the meeting starts, right before seven, to sign up at this clipboard on the podium. About anything, it's open topics. You can talk to us about anything you want, and you have all of our attention at once.
Yeah, my name's Tom, Tom, Thomas Lopez. I live in 101 Pine Crest. Been living there for thirty-five years. My house was built in nineteen forty-nine, so that alley has been open for seventy years. And all of a sudden, one of our neighbors issued a permit to put up his fence. And I believe the prescribed Eastman, where the, all the utilities run through that alley, all of a sudden, this person was given a permit to put up a fence that he hasn't had, that hasn't had a fence for seventy years. And he blocked twenty-four homes from having their alley being used. For now, we have to put our trash in the front, our barrel by the house, so that you have the barrel puller to come out and pull the trash out. I don't think it's fair or right or legal that he put a fence up after having it open for seventy years. So basically, that's my, my comment, and I think that it should be looked into. The other one is the, the requirements for a prospective Eastman is openly, notoriously, continuously for five years or more. And for seventy years, that alley, that particular property not have a fence or anything to interrupt the service of the city to go through there and pick up our trash. And if you're gonna put up a fence, what he had to do was make it like a gate or movable, so the city continued to do their business in the alley without interfering with the lives of twenty-four residents that, that we all have been living there for more than five, ten, fifteen years. And all of a sudden, now our lives is turned over because some guy put a fence because he wanted to block two feet on a corner of the alley. That's what all it is. What that pole he's talking about is two feet. It is not the entire length of the yard. It's probably two feet by five feet, and the truck would fit perfectly. So if I would like to have somebody look into it and see if we can remedy the situation.
Okay, be sure to give your name and contact information to our Assistant City Manager right here, Tammy Romero. And that way she can reach out to you and look into the situation and, you know, look into your recommendations.
One-on-one Pine Crest.
Okay. All right, the next agenda item is the approval of the, of the council minutes for the January ninth meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move items six A, January nine, regular meeting.
Second, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilwoman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any item they wish to pull?
Mayor, I just have. I just have, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one update on item nine E. This was a resolution to appoint a primary and secondary special magistrate for code compliance hearings. Today, we received a notice from the secondary special magistrate that he wished to withdraw his interest. So the resolution would be updated. I'm just gonna read the title in for the record. It would be a resolution of the City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida approving the appointment of MRN Law P.A. as the special magistrate for code compliance hearings, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so we're removing the name of this gentleman and also as secondary, basically. Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Okay.
To approve.
Is there any item anyone wishes to pull? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, second.
Motion to approve.
Second, Mayor.
All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilwoman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Let's move to old business, the golf cart updates. I believe the reason that this is here is just at, when we discussed the, a residence recommendation or request that we, I guess, facilitate the use of golf carts in the city. There were a lot of questions at that meeting back and forth. We found out it was actually much more complicated than we thought. So I had asked Heidi to, there was a lot of information presented there, a lot of questions asked, and I asked her to just get all the facts and summarize them for us so that we can review them. This isn't something that, that we're voting on tonight, unless there's someone that wants to make a vote on it. It's more just a presentation so that we're all on the same page. And in the future, if someone wants to request a motion on it, it can always come up at a future meeting. Is that? Okay, all right, let's move to, there's a lot of information there to digest. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is a new business, a resolution on the five charter amendments.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution title on. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, calling a special election on April fourth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the electorate of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, five charter amendments, providing requisite ballot language, providing for balloting and election procedures, providing for notice of election, providing for copies, providing for charter amendment election procedures and related details, providing for inclusion in the charter, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Council, this is a resolution that's consistent with what we discussed at the last council meeting. You'll recall that there were a few provisions of the city charter that we discussed. One was discussed last year relating to partial terms of office when someone is filling a, an office that is elective office, and they are deemed to have served a full term, even if they only serve for four months. So that was what, what we've colloquially called the Fahet Amendment. That was Councilman Fahet brought that to the council's attention last year. And then we have a couple of amendments that were recommended by myself and Madam Clerk. One is to update the city's qualifying period from a sixty-day qualifying period to a ten-day qualifying period. The other provisions relate.
Business days.
Ten business days, yes. The other provisions relate to, one second, to vacancies on the council and how those are filled. So there's two questions that relate to that, and those are, one of them is to provide, currently the charter provides for a hundred and twenty-day period of time before you need to take certain action. That's sort of what we've called the threshold. So we've increased that threshold, as we discussed at the last meeting, from a hundred and twenty days to a hundred and eighty. And then we also have a question on special elections to fill vacancies due to resignations when someone resigns to run for another office. And so those are, even though this one and the one I just discussed about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, they both relate to vacancies, but we've gone ahead and made it two ballot questions because they are distinct. And then you have a fifth ballot question, which is intended to remove obsolete provisions and reflect non-substantive, stylistic and technical changes. If you look at the, exhibit A, which is attached to the proposed resolution, you have a complete copy of the charter in front of you. The changes to the charter are obviously not to the entire charter, but only to certain sections. Those sections begin at line two hundred forty, which is on page seven of, page seven of exhibit A. That's where you see the changes in the text of the charter on qualifying periods. And when you continue to move down, you'll see the revisions on, the proposed revisions, might I, let me correct myself, proposed revisions on how to fill a vacancy. The first revision is actually on the terms of office at line three oh one. And I do want to note, when we looked at this, at the last meeting, we updated this language to make it clear that an individual appointed or elected to fill a vacancy on or after April fourth of twenty twenty-three shall not be deemed to have served a full term if the individual holds elective office for less than half of a term. And the text that you had before you at the last meeting didn't have that April fourth date. And I wanted to make sure that we included it because I know that I had received concerns about whether this provision would be applicable to people like Vice Mayor Loeb or Councilman Fahet, who this might be applicable to. And it was the Vice Mayor's, I'm sorry, it was Councilman Fahet's proposal last year, where he specifically said, I don't want this to apply to me. This is not intended to benefit him. So to remove any concerns that it might benefit somebody retroactively, we added in that April fourth date, which is the date of your election. What else? Then we get to lines three twenty-three, which are your section on how to fill vacancies. That's where you have the, if you have more than a hundred and twenty days or less than a hundred and twenty days, that's where you'll see those changes, increasing it to a hundred and eighty days, as we discussed. And then on line three thirty-two, you're gonna see there's a strike through. And this is what Vice Mayor Lo brought up at the last meeting, that realistically, we are unable to call special elections to occur within thirty days. That's not feasible. So we've updated that language to provide that it's at the earliest time permitted by law. That's not a specific question in the ballot. That's that catch-all provision, question number five, to update obsolete provisions. So that's where that change would come in, if, assuming that that charter question or ballot question is approved by the voters. And then finally, the last change that you'll see is on that same page at lines three thirty-seven to three forty-five, and that provides for the process for filling a vacancy by special election when you have a resigned-to-run situation. So those are the text changes in exhibit, the text changes to the charter are all set forth in exhibit A. That's what your charter would provide, assuming all of the ballot questions are approved by the voters. Some of you have inquired, well, what if one question is approved by the voters but not others? Then the charter would only be amended as to implement that. So what you have before you is the resolution. It, what it practically does is it lets the supervisor of elections, as well as your community, know that you're adding these questions, you're requesting that the supervisor add these questions to the election of April fourth. You're letting her know order that the questions will appear in, the ballot titles, the questions that the voters will actually see when they get to the polls, or if they're voting from home. And then it also provides all sorts of technical things for us to be able to do and follow up and, assuming that these charter amendments are approved, or if they fail, then we'll update the charter accordingly. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Through the chair, if I might. First off, I'd like to thank Vice Sirota for putting this in layman's terms. The county ought to hire you guys to write charter amendments for the county. Because this is totally readable and legible to practically any voter that would look at it and read it as newspaper article, for instance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Best.
Well done.
We had a, we had a team of myself and, and some of my colleagues who are very eagerly listening. Roger Poe, as well as Candace Valmorey assisted with drafting these revisions. And we've spent countless hours talking about what these provisions should look like and what the charter text should say and, and how to present this to the voters in a way that's meaningful and understandable.
You get an A plus, and with that motion to move the item.
All right.
You have a second?
Councilwoman? No?
The only thing, the only thing that I'd like to, to discuss is, if this is approved, which I think it will be, I, I'd like to make sure that, that we put a lot of explanation into this. I know that, that it is in layman's terms, but I, I just want to make sure that if possible, maybe put a, put something in, in the Gazette explaining each, each one and why we're doing it so that people understand. And, and not, you know, the fear of, oh, what are they doing to our, to our, our charter, you know, doesn't take hold.
Through the chair, William, is that something we can do on the city website?
Sure.
So.
Good suggestion, George.
I, I will add, the state legislator recently changed what we can and cannot do when it comes to adding things. Yes. The, the ever-present state legislator in your local government. So there are things that we can do, but we'll work with, with William and staff to make sure that.
Please, within.
We color within the lines.
That's right. That's, that's fine. I just, I, I just want to make sure because I, I know how, how these things take root sometimes and they, they grow out of control.
Yep.
So that's, that was the only thing I, I ask.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to piggyback on Councilman Loeb, how, because I don't know, I mean, I know I've seen my preliminary voting card, right, by, by precinct, so I'm able to study my questions prior to going into voting. I just don't know, because I never really thought about this, because when I go to get it, it's already there. But how, how soon are those preliminary of voting ballots accessible to the public so they could go ahead and do their research?
So what will happen after this evening is tomorrow, the city clerk will send this resolution to the supervisor of elections. They will go back and forth on all sorts of technicalities. The supervisor of elections office actually translates the questions into Spanish. And then they will prepare sample ballots. There's a ballot that actually gets sent to the clerk to review before it ever goes out to the public. We usually look at that together, make sure everything looks good. And then the supervisor of elections office takes care of issuing the sample ballots to the voters.
Okay, so maybe we can put a sample ballot on our website as soon as we get it. I don't know if that's legal. Okay, perfect.
All right, and before I call the vote, I just want to, to kind of reinforce that this is something we discussed in detail at the last meeting of these charter amendments, but there, none of us on the council stand to gain anything from this. What we're trying to do is simplify going forward issues that we've encountered, particularly when someone on the council resigns to run for another office, and we're left with a vacancy, and we can't fill it, even though the person has told us that they've, they're going to be resigning. Even though there's an election, a primary election coming up, we can't fill it because by charter, we can't fill the position until that person actually resigns. And several other issues that we've had in recent, recently with a, a few of the council members, which they have every right to, to resign, to run for another office. But also knowing that it may not be a resignation for another office. It may be an incident of, you know, God forbid, a death or, you know, a personal issue or something that someone on the council has to resign. And the way our charter was written, it made it pretty difficult for us to, to, in a timely manner, fill that seat and also prepare for an election. Make sure that, that everything that we need to do in accordance with the elections department meets the timelines of the days, like we have in here thirty days. And elections really most often can't be ready for an election by then. So these are all just things of, of almost like housekeeping.
Yes.
To tidy up our charter based on experiences that we've had and experiences that we can foresee to make it a, a, a better, more streamlined process for, for the election process. Well, going forward for elections, so that the qualifying period is shorter. We're the only, we have an extraordinarily long qualifying period, which no other city and municipality has. Most of them have a few days, up to like ten days or, or two weeks. And, and the filling of vacancies on the council. So again, I just want to make sure everyone understands there's nothing to be gained by that here in the, you know, if anyone in the council, it's just trying to make things better going forward for future councils.
More functional.
More functional, yes, and a, and, and a process, detailed process. Right now, there were a lot of things that were kind of left up to interpretation. Okay, so with that said, I'll, any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilwoman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Through the chair, maybe one of these days we can get, get to that thing in the charter, but runaway horses and what the process is for retrieving the horse.
That's not what it says. Anyway. Mayor knows what I mean.
Okay, we'll move to other business, an annexation update. I'll let William or Heidi.
Yes, as you know, and I, as I informed you at the last Board of County Commissioners, the medley application was approved with four years of mitigation, and that was put forward by their commissioner, J.C. Bermudez. When it got to V.G., Commissioner Cabrera deferred the item and asked that a survey be done of the business owners in the annex area to see what the favorability numbers were or not. At the same time, after that motion, he made another motion to bring Miami Springs back into the loop and asked that a survey be done of the Miami Springs annex area. I sent you what we. Um, I sent you what we received from the county last week. They allowed us to put together a hundred words that will be included in the survey that will go out to the business owners. We did that uh, last Friday. This morning, we, I sent them my last one with a small revision that uh, our city attorney had suggested, which we, we love the idea. So I sent that to them. Uh, I haven't heard back from them. So I also requested that we'd like to see a copy of the survey before it goes out.
Oh, yeah.
Cause I wanna see what uh, how it's worded and where our hundred words fit in and all that. Um, so uh, we're waiting on that. And uh, uh, I think we all know what the final outcome will be. We keep our fingers crossed. But uh, that's what we stand right now. And if these surveys come back and there's a high number of people that are in favor of the annexation, uh, I'm sure our commissioner will probably use that to bring the item back at a future date. Uh, we don't know that, but at this point, we are um, we've established, uh, we're working on, um, which is in the hundred words. We're working on a website uh, called um, yes to miamispringsannexation.com, uh, which will have updated information for all these business owners. Um, and we're working on other things to try and communicate with uh, at least a group that we know that's uh, uh, favorable to annexation, that we have met with at various gatherings and all that. Um, so that will, that's what we stand right now. The survey, um, the report to the commission is due back by March twenty-eighth. So I imagine the survey will be going on in the next week or two. Um, so um, that's what we stand. I don't know, Mayor, if you wanna add anything else?
Um, the only thing I wanna add is um, this is a survey that Commissioner Cabrera is asking of the business owners in that area. Um, these are not uh, uh, it's not a vote. They don't vote um, in, we all get one vote as a um, as a, a person, not as a business owner. So um, the only thing that I can add to that is that while this will be a survey of business owners, there are no residents in that area, so they don't um, uh, get to vote. Um, the residents of Miami Springs, the constituents, Commissioner Cabrera's constituents um, have voted twice um, in official referendums in favor of the Miami, of the annexation. Um, because um, they see it as something that, you know, they would like for the future of Miami Springs, an opportunity to expand our boundaries, improve our commercial and industrial um, component, and um, strengthen our city. So this is something that, even though we're, you know, uh, I wanna make sure everyone understands this is a survey of business owners in the annexation area. Um, the vote by the Miami Springs residents has occurred twice official votes. And both times, we've had overwhelming support for annexation by our residents, so um,
It's important to know that.
Commissioner Cabrera knows that and will re- keep reinforcing that.
Our two votes were residents. Business owners of our city weren't allowed to vote for that.
And we have five hundred business owners here. Um, there's eight hundred, there's eight hundred business owners in the, in the annexation area. Um, there's fourteen thousand residents in Miami Springs, so um, that have voted in favor of this. Um, okay.
To the chair.
Yes.
I wanna give a little bit, not an update, but a input. Um, when it comes to the, the business owners that in Miami Springs that weren't able to vote, they're already under same tax bracket. So I don't think that would have affected them, I don't think, in any way. Now, I think that I'm glad that they came back for discussion. I think it's gonna set maybe um, even though we think that the owner, you know, the business owners are gonna say no or be against it. But if their whole issue to begin with was the tax bracket, and we've already committed by resolution that we're gonna go down to two and a half to three, if that is the only thing that I, I think that this can go forward. Because there's no other, any other item to grab on, because they're not even getting serviced uh, accordingly by the county. Um, I think that if it does come back, I think perhaps we can even negotiate even a better deal for us. So I think I wanna be optimistic. I think um, things can work out and perhaps even better. I don't like to, I mean, this has been a long process. But I think that if, if it's only because of the tax bracket, I don't think that's enough leverage to just disregard twelve thousand residents, you know, because we're already saying that we're gonna match that. Um, and then I know that we had an issue with a mitigation, but hey, you know what? If we have to pay mitigation, again, if we could get a better deal, paying the mitigation. But also, I'd like to see if we can get the entire annexed area, not just the annexed area. And then they're coming in a half a mile into. So I think things happen for a reason, so that we can open windows for, for better, for better options. Um, so hopefully, I don't think that that's gonna science you and deliver um, our access to be able to team the annexation. I would like to think of it as a starting point to negotiate. Because if the only issue is the tax, and we've already put by resolution, just like how VG has, to come down to that, I'm, I'm sure we can, we'll work something out. I'm gonna be optimistic.
Yeah, you make a good point, though, and we should um, reinforce that is that when we um, uh, the annexation application, our annexation application, along with VG, Doral, and Virginia Gardens, Doral and Medley, were all approved by the county this summer. The, by the county commissioners um, for the annexation. What was not approved was our inner local agreement um, in November. And that um, supposedly was not approved um, because our millage rate at that time was still higher than Virginia Gardens. And our proposed millage rate upon annexation was still higher than what Virginia Gardens and Medley were proposing. Um, since that time, since the November vote, in December, we passed a resolution, taking that, as Councilwoman Bravo stated, um, taking the, the tax millage rate um, that issue off the table and um, committing to equaling our um, bringing down our millage rate to between two point five to three point O, which is a very competitive rate. Certainly competitive with the county, with the other cities, equal to what the other cities are proposing, but certainly competitive with um, the county's uh, one point nine, considering the, the uh, substantially increased services that we're providing to the area. So um, we are, we're optimistic. We continue um, on this. This is something that, you know, we will continue um, to uh, work for. Um, we have the overwhelming support of our uh, residents and uh, the commissions, um, the commissioners constituents. So um, we'll continue to, to head in that direction. And we'll see what the survey does and um, um, and how the commissioner wants to use that information.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I know this process, when you say that it's been going on for a long time, Twenty years. It's been going on for a long time, twenty years. Um, and we have, all the cities that are involved have bent over backwards to, to do everything that the county has asked of us. And we have spent money doing that. So to, to be put in this situation by the county, I think is very unfair. Um, and, and I, I, we'll, we will do whatever we need to do. But I think um, to, to your point, eh, does it, does it affect the business owners? Yes, it even affects our business owners. Because not only will our residents get a tax cut, but so will the businesses in this area. So it affects everybody, and it affects a lot more people in, in this district than it affects in that district. And the district that the, that the businesses are in right now, the proposed annex area. Um, so I, I think um, I, I think the county needs to understand that they have put us in a, in a, in a bad situation uh, where we have spent money to do everything that they have asked. And now to come at the last minute and, and ask more of us, I, I think it's, it's coming to a point where all the cities are, are, are getting a little upset. Um, so I think we, we need to move forward and hopefully uh, this will be it. And we can go, we can go and do it.
I wanna clarify something. When I said about the businesses in Miami Springs, I said that they don't get a vote, right? Like the other ones, but what I'm saying is that they're on our same plateau. Now, of course, they would be in favor because they benefit from the tax break. I'm just saying the other way around, that they can't vote, just like the others. But of course, they'd be supporting it.
Uh, through, through the chair, if I might, if I might, Mayor, thanks. Um, all, all of these are good things, and particularly leading off with uh, Councilwoman Bravo's uh, um, push for optimism in this. I mean, because of the fact that we have been working on it for twenty years. We've jumped over, head, head over teakettle for the county in, in terms of trying to comply with what the requests were. For those listening and at home, maybe just a, a slight definition of what annexation is. Annexation is the depletion of property, of enclaves of property, that the county does not wanna manage anymore, or for cost reasons or otherwise. And their intention in causing lands to become annexed are that the municipalities that assume them will take care of the residents and/or businesses of those affected areas. This process, this goat rope that's going on right now with our annexation, basically, uh, is, is an absolute defiance of that principle. Meaning that the largest portion of the annexation is going nowhere. Meaning our portion. VG's gonna get there a little bit, Medley's gonna get theirs, Doral bowed out, but stay tuned on that one. And the other problem with this, is the, what is problematic with this is that Commissioner Sosa is no longer representing us. Pepe Diaz is gone, and this, that was two votes for us. So you got a county commission now, which is, and I don't blame the mayor, the, the county mayor, um, Levine Cava, for vetoing it. Many people think she might have vetoed it because of the mitigation issue. But William and staff uh, put together a, a uh, a graduating thing going forward of the day of annexation to how Miami Springs would address the adjustment of millage, to comply with what makes sense for those business owners. And he did a great job with it. But now you've got politics intervening, and quite frankly, Mayor, it's a mess.
I, again, I'll, I'll go back to, obviously, it's in our um, new commissioner, um, Kevin Cabrera, who um, I have the utmost respect for him. And I believe that uh, he will uh, you know, that he uh, is looking out for the best interest of his constituents, of the fourteen thousand residents in Miami Springs. Um, so ultimately, I am very optimistic that we'll continue to work with this. I do wanna just make two points. One of them is the twenty years. I've heard this, oh, this has been going on for so long. Well, you know, this is really about words that we hear all the time now, equity, social justice, opportunities. What about, you know, we hear about those things for individuals. What about for communities? What about for smaller communities being treated equitably? Um, just like um, larger communities, say Doral or Hialeah have had the opportunity and, and several others to annex areas, to strengthen um, their cities, to increase their commercial industrial um, components. Um, what about opportunities? You know, we talk about making opportunities. What about opportunities for smaller communities like ours that have been here and have been in the heart of Miami-Dade County for a hundred years? Um, going on a hundred years, and this is the only opportunity that we have to um, to strengthen our, our community and, and um, increase our, our boundaries as, and it's not a substantial increase. Um, what about justice? You know, what about justice between communities and, and playing fair? So I think that these are all things that um, aren't done quickly, you know? And when I hear about, well, it's taken twenty years, or it should have been done before, um, do you, do we give up on these things, you know? And socially, do we, you know, these are ongoing fights. Civil rights and everything else are ongoing. You know, you continue and you work toward that. And um, I know as long as I'm sitting here, I'll continue to work toward that. And I believe everyone on this council will, and I believe future councils, because this is about um, justice, uh, opportunity and equity for small communities, um, which are just as important component of Miami-Dade County as the large ones are. So with that said, um, the other thing that I wanted to end with is that, you know, we talk about uh, the benefits to Miami Springs. But by far, the benefits to that area are substantial, to the annexation area are substantial. The benefits that they will be gaining. Anyone that's been in that area, um, you know, knows how it's looked for the past twenty years. It's looked the same. It's in a massive um, need of roadway improvements, uh, has substantial, significant flooding. We've heard some, from some of the business owners that when it rains, this isn't a hurricane, just substantial rain, that they have to shut down for seven days, because the roads in front of them flood with continual rain and the storm water um, uh, can't candle the, the draining. So a lot of times, not just their roads in front of their businesses, but um, their products on the first floor are damaged because of the water. And guess, if you're a large business owner there, which are very few, it's just a handful of the eight hundred and uh, eight hundred and five business owners there, the vast majority, um, probably seven hundred and something are small business owners, small property owners. If you're in a few of the handful of, you know, the five, six, or seven larger ones, you can afford to make those um, uh, uh, repairs to your flood control, to your business, to your area. But the smaller business owners there can't. So at the millage rate that we've proposed recently, um, since we were not approved by the county because of our millage rate being still too high, um, at our latest millage rate, um, which we passed the resolution committing to that millage rate of two point five to three point O upon annexation with mitigation, if necessary. Um, at that rate, the average business owner in that area, the majority of them, over sixty percent, will see a property tax increase of less than five hundred dollars a year. And for that, they will get an increased dedicated Miami Springs police officers, not coming from City Hall and going over there, but in that area, they will be designated to that area and patrolling that area, will have um, significant storm water and roadway improvements, lighting improvements, uh, uh, aesthetics. I mean, along that, with that, when you, we know that when you do roadway improvements, it doesn't cost that much more to beautify the area, to make it walkable and desirable, and you know, do some plannings. So these are all things that, that area will gain. And you, you can imagine, if you're a small business owner, being out of business for seven days because of significant rains, um, there's a big cost involved to that. Um, the majority of them that we have talked to are totally um, accepting of, you know, a, a very small increase in their property taxes, five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars a year for the substantial improvements that they will see to that area. So with that said, is there anything else?
I think we, the four of us have covered pretty well.
Um, uh, working with our uh, county commissioner, um, Commissioner Cabrera on this. Um, and um, hope that it gets brought back before the Board of County Commissioners um, in the future with um, the new um, millage rate. Okay, so let's move on to um, the next other business, announcing city council town hall workshop for February sixteenth. Um, that's going to be at six P M. It'll be, will it be here, William or it?
No, it'll be at the uh, senior
Senior Center, okay, at the senior center. Um, please mark your calendars. This is a town hall uh, meeting to review as um, as you know, we um, appointed last year, the city council appointed a Business and Economic Development Task Force of members composed of business owners, um, some residents from our community and business owners, not just from Miami Springs, but from outside Miami Springs. We also had um, uh, Mike Finney, who was the president of the Beacon Council. Um, unfortunately, he passed away in the middle of the session, but he was a, a very valued um, member of the task force. And the purpose of the task force was to make recommendations to the city council of what the city needs to do to um, to make the business environment uh, better for existing communities and to um, learn what sort of businesses we should be reaching out to attract for, for our community. So um, they finalized the report in December. And the purpose of the workshop is to, for us to discuss the recommendations, their recommendations to the council. Um, some of them, um, we uh, will be able to do right away. Some of them, we may decide we aren't going to do, and others may take more time to do. Um, but we need to discuss those. Um, and we want to make sure that the residents of our community um, and business owners in our community take part in that discussion. Um, the task force members worked very hard at coming up with these recommendations. So we want to be sure that when we review these, um, it's a town hall meeting. And our residents and business owners are involved in um, the review of the recommendations and um, um, input. Is there anything?
Shut it off.
Okay, so I really hope um, our residents, our business owners, mark their calendars for uh, February sixteenth at six P M. Erica, if they want to, to see a copy of the report um, before the meeting, we should make it available. Can we post that on our website and social media? A link so that everyone who would like to see the report ahead of time can review it? Okay. All right, um, moving forward, reports from our city attorney.
No report this evening.
City manager.
Just um, uh, two things, uh, going back to the task force uh, recommendations. I just wanna clear up some confusion out there about the track, the parking study that the city is undertaking. Um, not only did we get a grant for that study, but Not only did we get a grant for that study, but at the same time, it is one of the recommendations of the task force. One of their five recommendations was for us to do a parking study of the CBD district and that's what we're doing. Um, and then the final thing, um, uh, the museum.
And William, that is grant money.
Correct.
That is.
Correct. Well, it's seventy thousand, fifty thousand is grant, twenty thousand is city. Uh, the museum is having their car show this Sunday from uh, I think it's noon to four. Uh, and uh, Jaime Petralanda asked me to personally invite all of you to be there. I know Commissioner Cabrera is planning to be there for the opening ceremonies at twelve thirty, so if any of you can join us, that would be great. That Sunday, you have any more events?
The Miami Springs Park and Recs Department presents uh the rec campout. That is on Friday, January twenty seventh and Sat through Saturday, January twenty eighth. The last day to register is January twenty fifth, so um, if you have, want to have a tent set up. It's thirty dollars per family of four, so reach out to the Parks and Recs Department. Just uh, the Pelican Playhouse had a presentation that they came and um talked to us last council meeting. The Mystery Night um on January twenty seventh through January twenty ninth, so tickets are available for the fifteen dollars. With the pelicanplayhouse.org. William already mentioned the Historical Society First Annual uh Antique Car Show from twelve noon to four P M. At um, the museum on um, January twenty ninth. Saturday, February fourth, I'm sure mayor will uh. Talk a little bit more about it, but uh, it's chat with Mayor Mitchell from nine thirty to eleven A M. On Curtis Parkway uh Parkway near the Cavalier uh clock, so anybody that has any comments or questions, feel free to meet up with. Mayor uh Mitchell. And then we have on Saturday, February eleventh, we have the daddy daughter uh date night. Tickets are still on sale to uh Miami Springs residents. They are sixty dollars per couple and twenty dollars for any additional uh daughter. I know that a few of you have brought your children and it is a very nice event at the community center. The tickets are on sale. Also, um, I just want to remind everybody to just remind residents too that. You know, we're trying to get as much information out there as we possibly can. And part of that is is with our new um Miami Springs Click and Fix app. So not only is it an app on your cell phone that allows residents to identify maybe problems in the area. But it also gives the residents some information, you know, just informational um. Topics out there. So, and you know, we want to remind them to sign up for that and for our our weekly newsletter as well. That's it.
And um, before we go, I just wanted to introduce this gentleman who's been sitting there. I don't know if any of you.
Patiently.
This is Jose Lopez from Bermejo and Ahemil. They're our city engineers and. This is the gentleman that's working on the South Row, Puente Ana Medium project and on the Big Oakwood East Drive project. The South Drive project and the Hook Square Pump project. And the Resilience.
Got your hands full, sir.
So he's got, he's got a chance.
And these are all major projects that improve our roadways, uh flood control, storm water. Uh, there's a whole variety of uh. Make them more walkable. Um, so there's. Yes.
Plus, right. And he will be, if annexation goes through, he's ready to do the big stormwater master plan for that.
Which they will benefit from greatly. That annexation area will benefit greatly.
Which, which is interesting that you bring that up, because a stormwater would be on us. Water and sewer, the county would still assume it.
Right, right.
I have just to say that it's a pleasure working. I've been working for thirty five years, many, many cities, but working with these people is fantastic.
Wait, say it again. Miami Springs is the best. That's what I, that's what I thought. And I, and I want to say, I remember when we had F P N L here uh talking to us about, um, you know, converting forty percent of our um. Electricity underground and they said that it was a pilot project. It wasn't costing anything and they reached out to Miami Springs because they said, your pleasure to work with, so.
That's true.
It's good to, thank you. It's good to hear that. Thank you, but we do have amazing staff. Okay, um. Let's see, we'll start on that end with Councilman Best.
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, I I I heard Tammy bring up the event, the campout event. And I got a kick out of it when I saw the sign on the circle the other day. Rec Campout, W R E C K.
Yes.
Is it, is that a mistake or?
No, it's purpose.
All right, all right. Well, I don't, I just.
A play on words.
Semantics at its finest, yes. Secondly, uh, you also brought up uh the Pelican Playhouse. We just finished the first weekend of Mystery Night of Alibis. Did Friday night, Saturday night and Sunday afternoon to sold out audiences for all three of the productions so far. So if your intent is to go and see this, I recommend that you go online and get your tickets pretty quick. I know some of us are comped up here, but. Seriously, it's 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 a really good piece and uh. You'll laugh, trust me. Thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman?
I have nothing to report. Thank you for a productive meeting.
Councilman?
Nothing today. Good night and may the good news be yours.
I love it, George. Every meeting.
He would say that?
Yes. You know who did that, right?
I just want to thank everyone for your participation, for those of you that are um uh at home and and those of you that are here with us. And um, just um, it's, we're, we're, we are blessed to live in this city and um. I think um. Every single day that goes by, we realize it more and more how how dependent we are on our residents being part of our community and having input. So again, I just want to remind everyone about our workshop coming up, our town hall meeting. Please um, be present. We value your input. It's it, um, it's impossible to do the best for Miami Springs without that. And with that, good night. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Whenever you want. We need to.